Okay, it's six o'clock and I'd like to welcome everybody to our April 18th meeting. And as always, we'll open with the invocation and I'll call on Commissioner Richard Hales.
All right, if you'd like to join me, please bow down. Dear Him and Father, we ask for your blessings on the task before us. Please give us wisdom and clear insight on our deliberations tonight. Help us to recognize and honor those that we have the good fortune to work with in each of our, each and every day. May we set the example of leadership by demonstrating true transparency and a commitment to do our best for our citizens. Also, may our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all manners before us. Please give special protection to our law enforcement, our military, firemen, and EMS personnel, and honor the service they provide to our community. Finally, dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. In that name, we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to recognize Commissioner Richard Hales for an item that he is requesting to be added to tonight's agenda. Commissioner Hales?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my honor to bring to the board an item that I believe recognizes the outstanding work of one of our own. Jerry Simpson, I know that Jerry would be the last person to bring recognition to himself, but I feel strongly that we should provide recognition and thanks while Jerry is a member of this board. I want to introduce a resolution for renaming the Union County Special Events Center as the Simpson Event Center. Quick, don't shake your head.
I'm nominated, I will not run in the public, I will not serve. I'll speak to you tonight and take off.
And we're pleasured to have your family with you tonight. So, but since 2012, I've had the pleasure of working with Jerry on the Board of County Commissioners. He made it clear that he had a vision and a goal that began when he started working as our interim county extension agent in 1996, and then again, 1998 became our county extension director. In 2012, Jerry ran for county commissioner and has served the county since. It's also clear that Jerry's goal was an event center supporting our agriculture and our youth communities. Last July 21st, we had the ribbon cutting for the Union County Special Events Center. During that ceremony, we mentioned Jerry's involvement, and you could see the smile on his face that came over him, that this goal has finally been, come to fruition. However, that does not do justice to the hard work and dedication that Jerry has committed to this project and Union County. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to read the resolution.
Okay, go ahead.
Resolution for renaming of the Union County Special Events Center as the Simpson Event Center. Whereas, Union County opened its Special Events Center in 2021 as a part of the Union County Agricultural and Event Complex, and whereas, the Special Events Center includes amenities such as a covered arena and indoor exhibit hall in which events may be held, which events particularly include agricultural-related events, and whereas, the board desires to name the Special Events Center after a person who has made significant contributions to the lives of Union County residents, as well, significant contributions to the agricultural community and the promotion of agricultural activities in Union County. Whereas, Jerry Simpson is a lifelong resident of Union County, who has been involved in Union County community at large, and the agricultural community in Union County for his entire life, and whereas, Jerry Simpson has served Union County through public service throughout his life, including serving 20 years as a Union County Cooperative Extension Director, and serving 12 years as an elected commissioner of Union County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, though his public service and many other works in the community, Jerry has made a significant contribution to the enhancement of the quality of life in Union County, and whereas, Jerry Simpson is widely recognized and highly regarded for his work and public service in the community, and whereas, such community service has particularly included involvement in and promotion of agricultural activities in Union County, including encouraging youth to become involved in the important agricultural activities occurring in Union County, and whereas, given his impractical and longstanding community service to Union County, particularly including its agriculture community, it is truly an appropriate honor to name the Special Events Center after Jerry Simpson. And whereas, such naming of Special Events Center ensures that the Simpson name will be attached to an important Union County facility that will serve the agricultural community and Union County residents at large for generations to come in honor of his service to Union County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Union County Board of Commissioners as follows. The board hereby officially renames the Special Events Center as the Simpson Event Center. By virtue of this action in accordance with Section 2.2 of the Union County Facility Naming Policy, the board hereby makes all exceptions to the policy, including without limitation, exceptions to Sections 2.1.4 and 2.1.5 of the policy necessary to effect this action.
Jerry, I want to tell you one thing. The night I talked to Sheila about this-
Dennis, give me one second.
I'm sorry.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we name this current Special Events Center, the Simpson Special Events Center, in honor of Jerry D. Simpson and his dedication to Union County.
We have a motion. All in favor?
Do you want to discuss that?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I'm so excited, I'm losing my... Mr. Russian, would you, Commissioner Russian, would you like to go?
Yeah, I'm definitely in support of this. We cannot leave that thing called the Special Events Center. That's just, nobody knows where to go when they go to events, and like I said before, Jerry, I've been watching you work on these things for years, 20 years now. We've, you've dedicated your life to doing this, and, you know, I know how you feel about it, and I know that you're a humble person, but I could think of no greater honor and no greater name to attach to this facility than Simpson Event Center. So I hope you'll understand that and take it for what it is.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I haven't known Jerry as long as the rest of you, but I've grown to really like you and like working with you, and it doesn't take long to see just the depth and the breadth of your importance to this community and your involvement in agriculture, and I can't think of a better name to attach to this event center than yours. So, I wholeheartedly endorse and support this resolution and look forward to enjoying this for many, many years to come.
And Jerry, when I told Sheila that night that Tommy Burleson was there, I let her in on it. She said, "He is not gonna be happy." I mean, she was serious.
Nothing was different for her, though.
And when I told Alan Balkam that, and you know Alan, he said, "Well, Jerry's just gonna have to be unhappy for one reason." So, with that being said, we have a motion, all in favor, and Jerry, don't vote against y'all. I'm not even gonna call for against.
You can't stand you, you can't. Y'all wanna make a motion to make him recuse himself. Let's let Jerry recuse himself on this one. Do we need a vote on that? Mr. Burleson?
Okay, we're gonna allow Jerry to recuse himself. Motion? Aye. Now let's vote again. All in favor of naming it Simpson Event Center? Aye. Okay, I've been told we're gonna do three pitchers. One with the board, one with his family and Jerry, and one with just me and him. And I couldn't think of a better honor than Jerry, everybody's got a little devil and angel sitting on your shoulder. Jerry's my angel up there saying, "Don't do it. Don't do it." Let's have the family first.
My wife said, when I was getting ready for this meeting, "Why are you wearing that white shirt? You look so pasty in that way."
That one should come in, yes.
And for those of you that were in the board meeting earlier, this is the head that made the second hole in the sheet rock.
There we go. That's good. And here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Got it.
And Jerry, I put you right there with Babe Ruth. You know, Babe Ruth said, "It ain't bragging if it's the truth." And if anybody deserves it, it's you. All right, come on up over.
Yep. Can move that one back in. Thanks, Patrick. There you go. And one, two, three.
And then we'll do one with me and Jerry. And I'm assuming he gets carried through his home. Don't try to tear down the real one, it's a penalty.
All right.
I fall out with him. Jerry, when they first walked in and went around, you was looking down, and then you picked up on them. You took your glasses off and went away.
I have problems with that.
You what?
I'm gonna, we're gonna get one of you, Jerry.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. I'll give this to the thing.
Now, Mark, what are we gonna do with the $50 worth of Kleenexes for the crime?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure she told you the truth, but she said I wouldn't have. And I accepted graciously.
We all know the story of names on buildings, so sometimes they end well and sometimes they don't. I told Andrew Balkam the other day that awards were primarily reserved for people that had passed on and were dead already, so this is a little early on. I humbly accept it. I appreciate it. There's, there's none worthy but one, and certainly not me, but I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And Jerry, with that being said, you have served him your whole life. And when them people from Riley roll in, they'll say, "Simpson, ain't that the past agent?" And it's just good to be able to enjoy something.
That's not what they'll say.
They'll say, "Simpson, ends the folks with the eggs," right?
All right. Okay, we'll move on to informal comments. We have one person signed up, Ms. Gail Kiker. And I need to read this, Ms. Kiker, just for-
Okay.
You just need to state your name, address, and where you live. I know you live in Union County. I forgot. My brain is just messed tonight.
My name is Gail Kiker. I live on 6335 Austin Grove Church Road. Some of you I know, some of you I don't, but congratulations to you, Mr. Simpson, first of all. I don't think I've ever met you, but sincere congratulations on what just happened with you. Okay, I'm standing here alone, but I'm representing a lot of people. And this has to do with the water situation. I know there's more people than me in Austin Grove Church that wants water. We have wells out there. Now, I just moved to Austin Grove. It'll be a year, I think, in June. Mr. Raef, I would like to read something that you put on responding to me, and I appreciate that. But here's the problem with Austin Grove Church Road. Well, first of all, there's a huge church out there. Second of all, everybody out there has wells. People are having problems with having lime in their toilets, their showers. So to me, that's definitely not safe drinking water. This is a short extension, considering Five Points already has a water line, and Austin Grove Church, before you get to the city limits, is probably not even three miles. So, Mr. Raef, this is what you said. In the last three years, we have approved 16 million in short lines extensions to people like you. We are getting ready to approve another 35 million in water line extensions. I am here, I do realize that there is a form because I've been in municipality before, I've served on a board, and I know all that, but not everybody that lives on Austin Grove Church knows about that. So I'm here publicly addressing each of you to say, "We want water on Austin Grove Church Road." We deserve it, and as I said, a lot of people don't know about these forms you gotta fill out, and they shouldn't have to fill them out. They should be able to come to the board and tell you what we want. Now, I know there's other people that's got wells that want water as well, but there's too much of it going to the western part of the county. Send some to the eastern part. That's one issue. My second issue that I don't know that if there's anything that can be done about, oh, and I'd like to add, that everybody on Austin Grove Church I am representing. There's a lot of voters out there with the election coming up, and I don't want to hear, "Well, we're gonna do this," and some of my neighbors have told me that they've addressed this for five years, and nothing's happened. What happened? My next issue, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, but we are living in the hardest times of our life right now. School taxes. I do not understand, I know what the law is. Stony, thank you for sending it to me. I appreciate it, but I think it's BS. School tax, you've got 65-year-old people out here paying school tax that hasn't had a child in school in 30 years. Hey, I'm paying school tax. My parents are dead, and they paid school tax. The school tax, especially if you don't have kids in a public school, you got them in a private school, that's a double whammy. Second of all, a lot of people are choosing to homeschool their kids now. Why are you paying school tax? I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right. I mean, you should not have to pay school tax until you're dead. And I just can't understand why this board cannot do something about that. I don't care what North Carolina says. We'll go up there and protest, but it's not right. And at least, you could look at lowering them. Some people's school tax is as high as their property tax. It's just not right. And I have personally, I'm always for the underdog. I'm always gonna be. I have senior citizen widowed ladies that are living on a fixed income, that they go to bed every night worried about what they're gonna do to pay their taxes, to put food on the table. It's the world we live in now. And I do not understand why the board cannot do something to help the citizens of Union County. And my last issue, thank y'all for listening to me. Personally, I don't want to become a Charlotte. I don't. We have enough traffic in Union County, even with the bypass. You know, and I see so much stuff going toward the western part of the county. It literally makes me sick. Homes after homes after homes built on top of each other, but yet you got people out here that can't even use their wells right now, that's been citizens here forever. That should be the first priority. And with you said, with what's in your budget, I don't see why that cannot be done.
Thank you, Ms. Kiker.
I just don't. I'm looking to the board, and let me say one more thing. The election is coming up. I know, I don't even know all the candidates that's running. I'll be honest with you, but I'm doing my research. And as I said, I served on a municipality, and I'm gonna tell you guys the same thing I told them. Sometimes you have to stand alone, and you have to fight, and you get nothing done. The board has got to come together to be able to work together, or you get nothing done. And my thoughts on this, and I do not mean this in a mean way, it might sound that, but I'm just a person that tells it like it is. You either stand up or stand down, one or the other. If you can't do the job, get off the board. Thank you.
I would give you one bit of information. If you want to call our tax department, we have, if, once you're 65, if your income is not over, I think, $32,500, you can file, and they, we will reduce the property tax on your primary residents in half.
I understand that, but that doesn't solve the issue. To me, it does not. You still got people working over 65. They have to. I don't understand why you guys cannot do something about people that have not had kids in school for 30 years, 40 years, and as I said, they're, and then they wonder, "Okay, my kid's graduating from Forest Hills. I gotta pay school tax that they're not in now. Now I gotta worry about college." It's a double whammy to people.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm throwing this out there and asking you, what can you do? Right, North Carolina, do whatever it takes to help the people.
Okay. We'll certainly look into that.
And I do want it made public record that I was here without a form on behalf of Austin Grove Church citizens. I don't see anybody writing a darned thing down, but I'm here-
It's all recorded, Ms. Kiker.
But I just want my Austin Grove neighbors that have been-
Yes, ma'am.
You know, knowing, which I'm gonna post it anyway.
Well, you can put it up, you, tomorrow, you can look on YouTube, and they will have you on YouTube under Union County Board of County Commissioners, April 18th meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. I sincerely hope that you all take the issues very, very, very serious.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public hearings, we don't have any staff recognition. This is to acknowledge Employee Service Award recipients and retirees for the month of April. Okay. Yolanda Elliott from the library, five years. Victoria Crowe, Parks and Recreation, five years. Eric Dormand, Parks and Recreation, five years. Chad Green, Public Works, five years. Roxanne Smith, Sheriff's Office, five years. Douglas Straining, Sheriff's Office, five years. Courtney Elliott, Social Services, five years. Tamara Smith, Social Services, five years. Lindsay Schuford, Library, 10 years. DeCorah Bowers, Social Services, 10 years. Tammy Kelsball, Community Support and Outreach, 15 years. Jessica Helms, Nobles, Human Services Business Ops, 15 years. Timothy Speel, Library, 15 years. James Kennedy, Sheriff's Office, 15 years. Krista Wallace, Sheriff's Office, 15 years. Devonta Mobley, Social Services, 20 years. Christopher Thomas, Sheriff's Department, 25 years. And the April retirements are Sandra Harkness, Social Service, six years. Lawrence Maynard, Public Works Engineering, 14 years. Shannon Davis, Human Services Business Ops, 15 years. Janet Cox, Assessment, 20 years. Lisa Kaywin, Human Services Business Ops, 21 years. And Brenda Hardest, Social Services, 26 years. As always, we thank all of our employees for their, the hit and the mile service, the years of service post, the retirees, and the one that still come in every day. We thank all of y'all. Okay, we got the consent agenda. I need a motion and vote whether to approve it as posted or any comments.
Motion to approve as presented.
All right, motion to approve as presented. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The Union County 2050 Implementation Committee Updates. Bjorn?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Manager Watson, this is a update on the six implementation committees that you appointed in January of this year. We're approximately halfway through the process and wanted to give an update. There are six committees that are represented. Three of their chairs are here in person. I'll be presenting on behalf of the other three that are unable to attend. As a background, the conference plan was adopted last August. There were several issues that were identified that required additional research regarding policies or ordinance language, and we went out to the public requesting volunteers to serve on these committees. That occurred in the fall. The approval process for these recommendations, the committee will make a recommendation, the planning board will hear it first, they'll make their own recommendation. Could be to recommend approval, to modify it, or to recommend denial. Both of these actions, from the committee and from the planning board, will come to you, where you can approve these, or amend, or deny the recommendation wholesale. These committees started meeting in January, where we had initial introductions, established a meeting schedule, chairperson, and our meeting format. I'll say that each of them have been meeting in a hybrid format- I'll say that each of them have been meeting in a hybrid format since January. February through April, been conducting research, hearing from experts, hearing from the committee members on ideas and potential strategies, been evaluating them, and now in May through June, we'll be finalizing those recommendations so that the planning board can hear them in July. First committee is broadband internet. This is chaired by Lily Melvedias and she cannot be here tonight. Some of the strategies that are being considered, and in fact, are, are being considered at this meeting tonight regarding grant applications for extending service as a part of state or federal initiatives, subsidies for low-income households, education on how to request system extensions from existing internet providers, and education on available low-income programs that are already available to our residents. So, before I move on, does anyone have any questions or comments about the broadband internet committee? Moving along, next committee is cluster standards in rural areas, where water and sewer present. Chair is Nathaniel Grove and he is present, so I will ask him to come up to speak.
Evening, board, my name's Nathaniel Grove with, I'm the chairman with the Cluster Standards Committee. Um, so as Bjorn's prepared this year, we've reviewed a number of different strategies. We've considered relaxing minimum lot sizes down to eight thousand square feet, focused on protecting forest streams and other green space, open items that the committee has all reviewed, focus on protecting contiguous forests. So there's been a number of instances where we've reviewed samples during our committee meetings where we've said, hey, we wanna protect these, we, these are some things we'd be willing to go, be able to go lax on in order to try and maintain the overall focus of, you know, the green space protection. Minimum and maximum development size to be determined. So this is something that still we're working through as a team. Uh, we haven't quite finalized that, but as well as density bonus to incentivize cluster developments, that's something we've also developed and considered. Uh, some other items we've looked at is, again, the protection of the, the green space, waterways, things along those lines, we went through and did surveys amongst the committee members. And it has been very progressive and we are on time to meet our deadline of the May-June recommendations for the board. Do you have any questions or anything like that at this time?
Can you elaborate on what's meant by densely, density bonus to incentivize cluster developments?
So what we had considered is that in a lot of instances, you have large tracts of land that get broken up as one of the other members of the community brought up. And I myself grew up on a farm, you know, I, I live in the city now, the edge of it. And what we wanna definitely see, and what we're hearing from the people on the committee, is that we want to have more green space, less having all paved surfaces. One of the ways to incentivize developers, as we developed as a committee and we thought through was, is to reduce, developers don't wanna have sprawling areas, it costs them a lot of money. So something to consider was giving them an additional ratio of homes if they do go down the path of a cluster development versus sprawling and consuming all one hundred acres. So we would give them, let's say, an extra one house if they only can, consume eighty acres of a hundred acre parcel. That's just a simple example. Did that answer your question?
And this would be additional green space beyond what might exist in a flood plain or stream buffer, because that's already determined by county ordinance now.
That is correct, and we have considered that, that was something that was brought up and we've discussed that, it's not finalized, but absolutely, yes, it's been considered.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Bjorn?
And so as a reminder, this, this strategy for rural areas is rural areas that are identified in the land use plan, some areas are obviously undeveloped right now, but maybe identified for higher density in the future. We're talking about those areas that we want to remain a rural area, and so you're talking about a one unit per acre and the hypothetical hundred acre development that Nathaniel brought up. As it currently stands, you see a hundred acres turned into ninety homes and then maybe ten acres of right-of-way with it turning into a lot of yard. So this is the idea that if utilities are present, you maybe get those ninety or so homes on perhaps thirty acres of land, if they're down to eight thousand square foot lots, with the resulting fifty or sixty acres that otherwise would be turned, turned into yards retained in its natural state. So the next, uh, committee is the Litter Task Force. And this is a, a group that you've heard from plenty of times regarding, um, litter issues, particularly with Loretta, on behalf of, um, the Litter Busters Group, and she is a member of this committee. Some of the strategies that are being considered as a part of this process are Keep America Beautiful designation, we've heard from Lancaster County who has a similar program, they have a designation for Keep Lancaster Beautiful. Uh, making the litter committee a formal Union County committee instead of, appointed by the Union County Board of Commissioners instead of just volunteers that are appointed, or I'm, I'm sorry, not volunteers, but volunteer groups that maybe are ad hoc and, and fizzle out over time. This would give a more formal and durable status to that issue. A bottle bill for North Carolina, this is obviously something that's beyond what North Carolina can do, but one of our committee members is a former executive with a bottling company and he essentially said that they don't wanna, they, they don't wanna acknowledge it because it's an additional cost, but it's very effective at recycling and incentivizing people to turn in these bottles versus either throwing away or tossing out of their windows. So a, a bottle bill is something that would have to be a part of Union County's legislative agenda. Education campaign in schools, we're aware that these things are already happening, but it would be to further reemphasize, uh, the role of, um, littering and, and its impact. And increased illegal dumping penalties and surveillance, we're aware of the, um, solid waste program with the increased tipping fees for unsecured loads, as well as we've had representatives of the Sheriff's Department in attendance to talk about surveillance and, and hitting, uh, high dumping areas, perhaps dead-end roads, for example, where this is happening, but this is something that has to be emphasized. Indian Trail brought this up as a, as an example when we reached out to the adjacent municipalities on what they're doing, that they have worked with the Sheriff's Department to try and, um, hit those areas that where illegal dumping is occurring. So are there any questions about the work of this committee? Okay, moving along. Uh, open space in rural areas, the chairwoman, Laura Varela, is present and able to speak on this committee's work.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My group is very similar to Nathan's. What we're looking at is the open space in rural areas where water and sewer is not present. The group has been evaluating, uh, development options. And again, we, we're using the land use map that has been updated. And rural areas are to remain rural as much as possible because you have high and medium density areas around the towns, the municipalities and such. But we also know you need to have the flexibility, but some regulatory ordinances for these areas. And, um, a couple ones that we are looking at are low-density development with a minimum lot size. And, uh, the idea is to minimize grading and to maximize the open space and/or the undisturbed soils. Because that also has a, a, a negative effect on stormwater issues. The more that soils are disturbed, um, you have the runaway runoff and sheet flow situation. We're also looking at requiring a minimum open space percentage. And what we're looking at is probably twenty to forty percent possible. Similar situation with, um, uh, you will have one for, you know, smaller developments of the R forty, but then ones with also, if there's a cluster, um, and looking at, say, keeping forty percent undisturbed, um, with also a similar idea of potential, uh, you know, density bonus on that. But again, we are focusing to, um, preserve the rural character and to minimize the impacts to like wildlife. We are using information and data from the twenty-fourteen, uh, comprehensive plan, which had a great deal of, of data on the, um, on Union County and our heritage sites, our rural areas and such. But we're mainly looking at using the land use map and then developing, um, the proposed language for an ordinance, um, with an addition of looking at a development design guide for, for, um, the developers that show, you know, that we're looking to minimize the impact to the total area and trying to keep contiguous areas for wildlife undisturbed. Do you guys have any questions?
Commissioner Rushen.
Mr. Chairman. Are you looking at properties with sewer or septic tanks only?
Uh, septic tanks.
So, uh, I guess I'm a little confused then that if, um, what's, what size are you saying of a development couldn't use R forty with septic tanks? You're saying like twenty, forty percent, so if I have ten acres, do I have to not build two houses or four houses because I'm in the county or, or maybe I'm not understanding?
Oh, well, that's the thing, is we're trying to give some flexibility, so it's almost looking at like two options. One, which are sort of the smaller, you know, number of, of, like, say you have a ten acre and you're splitting it in two, um, but also in like the forty acre and where there may be an idea that, you know, that the developer wants to make forty sites on the forty acres, but he's willing to, um, in looking at, um, the terrain and looking, you know, to protect any streams, having stream buffers and such, um, or forest area park, only, you know, maybe developing forty percent of that area and leaving six, or, I'm sorry, sixty percent leave, um, natural and forty percent, I'm sorry, I'm saying that again wrong, uh, forty percent undisturbed. And the sixty percent having, having property, um, developed. But there'll be smaller, um, areas.
The members of your committee, are they all in rural Union County or they live in municipalities as well?
I'm sorry?
The members of your committee, do they, do they live in municipalities or everyone's in unincorporated Union County?
Mainly, mainly rural areas.
Mainly rural areas.
Mainly rural areas?
I, I know I am in a rural area.
Yeah, so, yeah, again, that would be very important that we're not devaluing people's property, uh, as well. So I would caution you against, you know, taking away property values that somebody may have, um, in your, in your discussions. Thank you.
Ma'am, what I think I heard you say is on a forty acre plot, they could build forty houses if they could get septic tanks. But you're asking us to allow a twenty to forty percent reduction in lot size and that twenty to forty percent would go in a common area. Is that what you're asking?
Yes and no, I need to clarify that we had, um, uh, someone who spoke to us from Union County Environmental Health. And we're also not trying to, um, tie up, uh, the option of having a shared septic. So that's where that would, you know, allow that density to be smaller property or, or smaller area of that total footprint. And so we are looking at that. But, you know, the whole idea is we are trying to minimize the impact to, um, development. In most rural areas, we'd like to prevent that, but we also recognize that there are some rural areas that, you know, say, uh, either a, a family wants to have more homesteads for their family or, um, or other instances where it may be good because it's a, uh, conserve, conservation development. Those are the ones that we're really taking painstaking looks to try to have flexibility, but also have, you know, the option of looking at someone who's just looking at a smaller area versus a, um, a large area that could be beneficial because they'll help with the, the housing situation in Union County. But at the same time, also be protective of habitat and the rural character of the county.
Okay. What I'm thinking, and I guess I'll put it in the form of a motion, to ask the manager to get, ask planning, I think we have the mechanism in place to do what you want. It just requires a plan for the whole tract of land to be submitted at the beginning of selling the land.
That'd be great, because one of the things we were looking at was a pre-meeting where the developer would bring a sketch, you know, and already have the ideas of, here are the critical areas, you know, like if there is a, a, uh, water or wetland, um, or a large stand of mature trees, you know, that's already laid out so they can come to the planning department and say, this is what we'd like to do. But also that we were going to have as an attachment to the proposed, um, ordinance, a guide, because there are, there are a number one, number of ones that we have been evaluating that North Carolina provides.
Commissioner Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say, uh, in a former life, I forget how many years ago it was, but, uh, I, I did a good bit of work as county director in this area. We had Randall Aaron in the county several times and the town of Weddington actually contracted with Mr. Aaron and instituted conservation subdivision design in Weddington. And I assume they, that's still an option, it's not the only option anymore, but it's still an option. There's always some unintended consequences with this, like how you manage waste, the shared, uh, systems, uh, who's gonna manage that other fifty percent of the property in terms of the, the open space, the forest fields and streams area, who's gonna manage that? So, um, a great idea and certainly worthy of pursuing. It will take a lot of work through planning and, and the planning department to bring it to fruition, but I commend you.
Okay. We have a motion to ask the, uh, Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir. Uh, just wanna make you aware, this is really just an opportunity for the committee chairs to give you an update. They will come back to you with actual items for you to take action on at that time.
Okay.
I, I would recommend, if you don't mind, we...
I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, sir.
And let Lee and Bjorn and their staff get the details in place. But I think we already, already have the mechanism in place, but what Commissioner Simpson said, who's gonna manage the, the group septic system? You're really talking about a homeowner association, uh, that's gonna be responsible for that. So, okay, I withdraw my motion, thank you for your presentation. But you're gonna be back to us. Did you have something to say? Okay. I was just trying to move the ball down the field if it needed to be moved.
That's fine. Uh, the next agenda, or, I'm sorry, the next committee is on school siting. Uh, the chairwoman is Monica Schrader, she was unable to be present, she asked one of the other committee members, Mark Telly, who actually is on the Board of Adjustment, to present the strategies and discussion that has occurred over the last few months within that committee.
Good evening, Mrs. Simpson, congratulations.
Thanks very much.
We started out throwing some ideas around and hearing a lot of the issues. Uh, one issue we heard that basically a school is not subject to zoning, they can basically go anywhere. Then we got another issue that our state legislator passed a bill that our state is responsible for the roadwork of any school, whether it be public or private. You can't get just so much out of milk out of a dry cow. There's no money there to do that. So they tend to play it down to the lowest level they can get by with. So we've been running several ideas around, what we've come up so far is, number one, maybe requiring more than one driveway into a school, whether private or, uh, public. And I will add, our public schools do a great job of designing their campuses with what their land allows them anyway. their land allows them anyway, but they all need maybe a little more oversight. Another one, some of our Union County public schools, especially out in the rural areas, were fortunate enough to build kind of in a corner where there's roads on, that connect on two sides, and that is, works really good to, with the traffic flow, but it's not always a plausible thing to do. They've also, we've also discussed requiring a special use permit. At that point, it would be brought before the Board of Adjustments, which I'm a member, and we would have the flexibility through a quasi judicial board to put requirements on it. That would be, they'd basically be required to meet the five finding of facts that anybody else coming before our board would have to meet. In my opinion, that's one of the fairest ways to address it. There's also running around the increasing the minimum buffering, buffering around it. Not really quite sure how that would help traffic flow, but it's still an option we need to look at. And then the other thing is requesting the state law requiring the CDOT to pay for road improvement for schools be rescinded, because as much as I love and agree with the private school system, they're a business. They're a school, but they're also a business. And there's one that I know of that built on a particular road in Union County that requires, it brought a lot of traffic to that road. Understandable, because you have parents picking up and dropping off. The state done all they could, but there was also a roundabout that was already in the works for that particular area. Well, then after this particular school brought all this extra traffic to the area, now they want to be compensated for the property that it would take to build a roundabout. And that don't help matters. So we've got to get something done to help to pacify everybody, because we gotta have good schools. We're very blessed in this county to have good schools, both private and public, but we also got to accommodate some of the issues that they create. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, Mr. Telly, Mr. Telly, Commissioner Rush has got a question.
Yes, sir.
One, one thing that I would ask for on your committee and the staff could provide for you is a list of the properties that we, many years ago, somebody had the idea of land banking school land. So a lot of millions of dollars were spent to land bank land, and we also have current schools that may be expanded or we purchased land. The requiring the two roads, I'm trying to think of the ones that that might be an issue for. So you may want a list of the school lands that we already have that have been banked and set aside for school properties before requiring that, because that could be something that doesn't work for some of those properties, and I'm not sure, but I can just, I can think of one or some. What? Crow Road would be one. I'm thinking Forest Hills High School Road might be one. I don't know about Cox Road or that, and then there's another on near eighty-four and-
Cox Road's two.
Okay. So, so that's something I would look at before requiring that, because it may be something for our public schools that they could not meet with land that's already required.
Well, right now, it's my understanding that there, there is no new public schools being planned. There's a replacement and some renovation.
Right, but-
But in the future, yes, that is something that really needs to be looked at and absolutely. If there's areas that would decrease traffic issues, then that's what we need to look at as long as it's feasible with where the growth is.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as a reminder, these are just strategies that are being considered. Over the next couple of months, they're gonna be refined and honed down, and not every strategy that's a bullet point in here is gonna ultimately get recommended to you, but we certainly wanna hear from both the planning board and from the county commissioners so that we know what's kinda important and what may be dead on arrival in a few months when the, when their committee's work is done. The last committee, at least I think it is, is stormwater. Their chair, Josh Allen, who's a civil engineer and does civil work for stormwater systems as his day job, was unable to be present. Stormwater's big issue in, in Union County is something that we're probably not gonna be able to turn around in terms of doing a lot of retrofitting, but certainly the impact of subsequent development moving forward over the years and decades is something that this committee is working on. Talking about storms, stormwater standards, a lot of technical information, like a fifty year storm, what does that mean? Currently we design to twenty-five year storm. Runoff calculations for mass graded developments. This is something that's kind of inside baseball, but it's actually very important with the details. It's the idea that if you mass grade a development, you have the clay underneath, it's been compacted down, and then you throw two inches of topsoil on top, it doesn't behave as natural grass. It behaves as close to impervious, because after that, two inches of sod is saturated, it just runs off, and so its absorption rate is much less. One of the recommendations that may come out of this committee is to apply a, a higher runoff coefficient to lots that, and to area developments that have been mass graded in this manner, as opposed to maybe something that Laura was talking about earlier, where less of the land was actually disturbed and more is in a natural state and can, will absorb water more readily. Encouraging retrofitting of existing yards. We're getting presentations from our soil and water district staff on initiatives that they have. Increasing stream buffering, obviously our streams are what we're working on here, and when the land is platted to include private yards going all the way up to including the streams, you get incremental improvements of the properties over time that can increase the runoff into those streams. Stormwater detention on site for new development. This is something that we see in rezonings, but a lot of buy, buy right development you don't necessarily see. Charlotte Mecklenburg Stormwater Development Standards, this is actually a manual that a lot of developments and developers and their staff that develop in Union County, they refer to, because a lot of the other municipalities in the region apart from Charlotte Mecklenburg already use, because it makes it more predictable. So this isn't necessarily to make things more difficult, because a lot of our developments already rely on this, but it makes it easier for staff to have something to point to, because we don't have a development standard of manual that they can point to for designing their infrastructure. And then lastly, requiring developments upstream from known flooding areas to include additional mitigation to recognize the fact that they are gonna have some runoff from their site, and if there's already known flooding issues downstream, the potential for increased attention capability in their property to keep that from happening downstream. So, a lot of strategies, a lot of impacts on subsequent development, some initiatives for retrofitting existing properties, but it's an important issue. We have a lot of capable residents, professionals on this committee, and we're, we're happy to have them, so I'll try and do my best to answer any questions that you may have on their behalf.
Bjorn, jog my memory, this, this may be totally off base, but seems like I remember not too far back, wasn't there an effort at a grant where a number of the municipalities went together related to this issue?
We did-
Can you give me some-
We did, that, that we actually tried twice, once through a Department of Transportation grant, once through a FEMA grant. We were unsuccessful both times. It was to look at our system of drainage facilities and our road system and look for the interfaces. This was on the heels of Hurricane Florence, where we had literally dozens of roads closed and, and facilities damaged, and looking at prioritizing, kinda like our critical intersection program, this would be our critical culvert and bridge program, to figure out which ones do we need to prioritize for upgrading, and what should those designs be to give us maximum resilience as potentially more intense storms happen in the future. So it's something that's still important, but we were unsuccessful.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sir. And that concludes the presentation, so we hope to be back by August with the recommendations, including the feedback from the planning board.
Next one, Special Events Center Operations Update, Assistant Manager Nollin.
Thank you, Chairman. No longer called the Special Events Center, now the Simpson Event Center. We just wanted the opportunity to give you all a brief update. The center's been open for about nine months. We've hosted a variety of events at the facility, so we just wanted to give you a sense of how it's being used and the kind of reception we are receiving. Opened in August of 2021, total revenue is currently at fifty-eight hundred dollars. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot, and I'll, I'll explain why here in a second, but we, we have utilized the facility to its fullest potential, we feel, so far. We are excited about the events we've had and we're excited about some of the events that have booked moving forward. About ten thousand people that have gone through that facility for all those events. It equates to about eighty-two total events, which is about two and a half events a week. And what you have to realize, some of these events are multi-day events. There's a day setup, the, the day of the event, and then a day breakdown. So the, the time the, the facility is actually being used is much greater than eighty-two days. This is a, a list of some of the events we have had. Union County Sheriff's Office uses it for some of their training, their K nine training, their physical fitness training. They, they've had events out there, they had an event tour out there. The Girl Scouts have used it multiple times. The Cattlemen's Association meets there regularly, the Heritage Festival, the Bee Academy and Bee School, the beekeepers use it quite frequently, at least once a month. Leadership Union has used it. Safe Kids Day, which is a Safe Kids Alliance, has had fun runs out there. They've had fire safety events out there. The FFA tractor driving competition, I got invited to come out and test my driving abilities, which I, I'm happy to say I'm, I'm pretty good at driving a tractor. Union County Parks and Rec had a twenty-four hour race. It was a rela, a lapped race out there, so they would start and end at the, the pavilion at the Special Events Center using the Heritage Trail. Young Riders Club, the Crime Stoppers Blood Drive, they were able to pull their bus into the facility to, to host their blood drive, which is not something they've had the ability to in the, in the past. True Homes Furniture Sale, this is one that I think a lot of you had heard about. We had people lined up at five o'clock in the morning to get into the True Homes Furniture Sale, which is all the furniture they use for their staged home. I, I don't think the event actually started till nine or ten o'clock, so they were lined up hours in advance to get their chance at a deal. Four H has used it extensively for their robotics program, Envirothon, some of what Soil and Water is doing out there, they, they've been able to utilize it. Senior Wellness Meeting, Saddle Club, Turf Trade Show. We had a turf trade show out there that, artificial turf, and from that trade show, they actually made a donation of AstroTurf that we were able to use inside the condition part of the Special Events Center, the Simpson Event Center. And these last two, the Sweet Union Junior Live Pot, Junior Jackpot Show and the Wake Up To Ag, these are probably our two biggest events. The first one being our first true shot at a livestock show. I think we learned a lot that week. By all accounts, it was a good production. We did learn some things that we need to do differently moving forward, but I will say that staff had to turn around the entire facility in about a day to get ready for Wake Up To Ag, which was four thousand third graders that came to use that facility the week after that event. So between those two events, we, we learned a lot about how to break down a show, how to set it up for livestock, and then have to turn it around for something different following up. So I have a, a few pictures from various events. The beekeepers, as I said, they use it pretty frequently. The Antique Tractor Show, this is the first year they've really been able to showcase the full potential of, of what they can do just because of the space, getting them away from the ag center, getting them away from some of the parking and traffic concerns that they've had. The Cattlemen's Association, another organization that uses it quite frequently. The Smith Turf Trade Show, this is the one I was talking about, where we actually got a donation of that AstroTurf from this group. This is some of the physical fitness training that the Union County Sheriff's Office does out there, and I, I believe they do this quite frequently out there as well. And this is the Sweet Union Livestock Show. I, I know Jerry was heavily involved, but I, I think by all accounts, it was a good show. We were, we were happy with how it turned out, and again, we did learn some things moving forward. The, the Bull Sale has announced that they are coming to our facility in December, so it's a, it's a step up from the, the Junior Livestock Show. We have a, a number of heavy duty panels that we're in the process of procuring. We're acquiring some additional equipment, but we do feel comfortable that we'll be ready for that show. And then the last slide is Wake Up To Ag. I think you'll recognize these two individuals. Mr. Balkum on the left was driving the shuttle train for the third graders, and I don't wanna say that's an artificial smile, but I believe that is an artificial smile. And then Mr. Watson in his Element, talking to a bunch of third graders about agriculture. That is, that is all I have for you, but I can answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the Jackpot Livestock Show was a great success. That was a paying event, by the way. I did help them some with that, but they were paying customers. We had folks from Virginia Beach, we had folks from Georgia that came up and attended and participated in that show. So again, my, my point that it's an economic development opportunity where people come in from out of town and spend their money here in Union County. I also didn't see, maybe I missed it, poultry equipment plus, had a trade show out there also.
They did. There, there were only certain events I had pictures of, so I didn't throw it up, but you, you are correct.
Patrick, I know this is a big ask. I've had some people ask me, is there a way we, I know they need to contact the people in charge at the ag center that would rent this out, but could we put up a calendar similar to what we have at Canyon Creek that shows open dates and, and tell them on there, you must, you know, you can't reserve it here, you must contact, but at least that way people could look and see potentials and put the rates up there.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that's an unreasonable ask, so let me, let me check with some people to see what we can do.
You know, the, the quicker we can get it to where our website does a lot of menial things for us, it just makes it easier for the public.
Sure. And I will say, a number of these annual events, they've already booked for next year, so they've used the facility, they appreciate the facility, and they wanna continue using the facility, so that's what we wanna see. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the Jesse Helm Park Master Plan Overview and Implementation, and Mr. Jim Chapin, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Okay, I didn't show up for two or three, four years, and I've suddenly been here twice in a couple of months, so it's good to see you guys again. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time tonight. Commissioners, Mr. Watson, I'm gonna take the opportunity to beat our extension director and take the opportunity to tell Mr. Simpson, congratulations on a well-deserved honor.
Thank you very much.
I, I definitely approve everything that they said about you this evening.
We appreciate your support of that effort.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So tonight, guys, we're gonna run through the Jesse Helm's Park Master Plan that was just developed by Land Design. We received the final copy back in February. Promised you guys whenever I did my budget presentation, we would give you something within a couple of months, so we'll run through this. Quick history on Jesse Helm's Park. Jesse Helm's Park Soccer Complex opened back in two thousand nine. In the two thousand eight, two thousand nine part of grant fund cycle, Union County applied for and actually received the full match amount, five hundred thousand dollars for development of the passive area there at Jesse Helm's Park, which just as we move through this, keep in mind, that is the area that's directly across from the new Simpson Event Center, so when I speak of passive areas, that's the area that I'm referring to. Unfortunately, we had to return the Part of Funding that year due to the recession. We were getting calls from management at that time, basically saying, hey, what can you guys help us with as far as giving back monetary monies at that point? So we decided as a department at that point that we were gonna give our five hundred thousand dollars back to Part of, which of course freed up the five hundred thousand dollar match money that we had for the passive area development at that time. So unfortunately, since two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that property has sat there dormant, nothing going on, no dirt being moved, Parks and Rec staff basically bush hogging it two or three times a year. And then fortunately, sometime in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, management approached Parks and Rec in regards to the development of the Simpson Event Center, their own park property. to the development of the Simpson Events Center there on park property. From the Director's Chair, from our Park Operations Manager's Chair, it was a no-brainer for us. Let's get something out there, because it was hard for us to justify at the time trying to spend X amount of dollars on passive area development. However, now that we have this new facility there, we feel like, I think, Mr. Simpson, you alluded to earlier in our budget presentations, the data's there to support it now, that we actually need some extra added amenities out there. So with that, we did move forward with a park-specific master plan for Jesse Helms. We currently have a master plan for Kane Creek. We have a comprehensive master plan, which is for Kane Creek, Jesse Helms, and Fred Kirby. So the reason that we have to do this particular park-specific master plan is for our Part of Funding, it's a big point-getter for us. So we have to, we had to do this park-specific plan. The last one was dated back in 2005, so it was already outdated at this point. So as we move forward through this presentation, you'll understand why it's very important whenever we start applying for Part of. Community input. Land Design mentioned to us, this was obviously done during COVID, so all this was done, social media, there was no phone calls, there were no in-person meetings, but we received 685 responses, which we felt was, we felt that was really good. We did reach out to some of the local municipalities to help us push that survey at the time. So the next few slides, we're going to talk about the, what people want as far as the themes, the programs, and the activities. The first one we'll talk about is the theming. You'll hear this as we move forward. It's all about nature. It's all about what's out there now, not changing much, kind of taking what's there and building to it, if that makes sense to you. We also want to talk about the history. For those of you that don't know, we do have the Sykes Cemetery that is located, it's inside the passive area, it's pretty close to the soccer facility. And then, of course, we've got that agricultural side that we all know, that we talked about, Parks and Rec Extension trying to work together on things. The program prioritization, play. That's the one where you've got your playground structures out there. You know, the kids can come out and they can do the playground structures. They can ride their bicycles on the pass. They can, let's see, they can come out and kick balls. They can throw football, they can throw baseball, they can do kind of whatever they want to as far as that play goes. When we start talking about community, that's when we're getting into community events, those larger events that we would actually have at the park facilities, or have a combined event with the Special Events Center and using the park property as well. The educational, that's where we would work with Andrew's Extension Agents, whether it's the Soil and Water or any of his other folks that could come out to the park and work with our outdoor rec department and provide programming for folks. The last one, the sports. So Union County Parks and Rec, the only sports facility that we have really is Jesse Helms. We do have the soccer facility, but now we're actually talking about almost having two parks in one at Jesse Helms. We'll have a soccer complex, which is your athletic side. This new one is going to be your passive side. Sports, not as much, which didn't really surprise me. A lot of our local municipalities take care of the sports. We also have our volunteer athletic associations throughout the county that actually provide those sports to the kids. So it's really not necessary for us to provide any more athletic facilities, but there were a few comments there that they wanted those. Activity, walking, regardless of whether you see this in a park survey, a health survey, a community survey, I'm pretty sure that Bjorn and Lee had mentioned at one point, even during the 2050 comprehensive surveys, you're always going to see walking and hiking as your number one. I mean, that's what people want. We currently, during the COVID pandemic, our guys were able to go out and construct about three and a half miles of trail at Jesse Helms Park, and that's all pretty much in the woods. However, with this particular implementation, we will be able to add anywhere from three to five miles, depending on where we will put it. It wouldn't all be in the woods at that point, but now you're talking about concrete paths or asphalt paths, natural surface paths. Community outdoor, again, that's going back to those events that we would have, whether it's just a Union County event, whether it's in conjunction with other municipalities, whatever we want to do there. That Destination Playground, and you'll see some pictures coming up later on, what we're going to try to do here is we're going to, again, use the land. We've seen some pretty cool renderings on what these architects and engineers can do. Play structures are no longer your standard platforms, where you see the purple and the green and the blue, and, you know, they go up the steps, they come down the slide, they go up the steps, they go down the slide. There's new types of equipment that actually makes the youth use their brains a little bit to get from point A to point B. There could be 50 different ways. So that's one of the things we're going to do here with this Destination Playground. The trail running, that goes right in line with the walking and the hiking. As Mr. Nolan mentioned, we have a vendor now that's used us probably two or three times at Jesse Helms Park for our trail runs, and there's no indication that he's going to stop. He actually prefers Jesse Helms now because of the new, because of the new Events Center as opposed to Kane Creek. So we're going to get into a few slides here that's going to talk about what we're wanting to do, and you'll see that environmental, you'll see the play, you'll see the agricultural as we move through. There's going to be one more slide towards the end that'll kind of go over the phases of this project. This kind of breaks it up a little bit for you here as far as the dotted lines go. The open and the passive. And on these next few slides, I would definitely recommend that you look at some of these photos that are here, and it kind of talks about what we're actually seeing. That top-left photo is something that I had honestly never heard of. It's an open dog leash run, I think is what they call it. So basically, we're going to put, on the outside of this, you can't, well, you can barely see the black fence, there'll be fencing all down this pathway, but you'll be able to just take your dog in there and let him run. Instead of having this big, open dog park, this would be more of a dog trail. One of the things that we definitely want to do is we want to utilize these mounds that are here, and that is really for us to kind of separate the Events Center from the park facilities, and then also add that, the contour of the park as well. So whenever you start taking those walks or those kids come out there, you know, they've actually got something to play on there. Next one will be your open and your rural passive areas. So this is where we're talking about getting in those Boy Scouts, getting in those Girl Scouts, come down and go camping with us overnight, providing them an area where they can come and congregate for more than just a day, I guess more of like that overnight. And then there's also talk about doing, you know, the, I guess, the old-style homes that we would put in there, kind of, I guess, similar to what Waxall has with the Waxall museums with that small section they have. Agricultural, I think that's kind of speaks for itself. Again, that's us getting involved with more with Andrew's agents and utilizing what we have at Jesse Helms Park to provide those educational programs. The top-right photo is what they're calling now is a boardwalk in a park, so it'll sit six to eight feet above the ground, and you're actually walking on the boardwalk versus just walking on the natural surface, which is a pretty cool idea. The one right below it, we're definitely, that's something we're going to have to do. It's an educational classroom, utilizing the outside. I know a lot of our outdoor rec department activities, plus the Extension Agents' activities, it's easier to do it outside. The play and the active, this is where the kids are going to want to come to that Destination Playground. You can see in that bottom photo, and that's probably the one I'd want to point out the most, you can see they took a hill and they just put a slide in it, which is pretty cool. And then in the top-left, there is discussion about putting like a meandering small river, I guess, for children to be able to play in. So we, as Union County, we don't want to do a splash pad. Everybody, there's other splash pads within the county right now. We've got one in Monroe, Monroe's going to be building one, Indian Trail has one at Crooked Creek, and then Stallings has one at their facility there in downtown. So we were asking about a water feature of some sort, but not necessarily a splash pad. So this was the idea that they've come up with at this point. So this is that phase plan that I mentioned earlier. This initial implementation will be probably four or five items of that Phase 1, as far as monies that will be available, and then we'll run into Phase 2 and Phase 3. As Patrick and I have discussed, none of these items that are listed in Phase 1, Phase 2, or Phase 3 are have-to-make happen. These are things that are up for discussion. This is simply a rendering of what Land Design took all the survey responses and gave us back what they felt like is what people were asking for. So these are things that we can always come back and tweak a little bit one way or the other, take out, add, whatever that looks like. So what I'm asking for this evening, as I mentioned earlier, I do need approval on the Jesse Helms Park Master Plan from you guys. Again, that's a big point-getter for us whenever we start getting the, whenever we do the Part of application. And then the second part of the equation tonight is I want you, I'm asking for your approval for us as Parks and Recreation Staff to submit a Part of, excuse me, a Part of Grant application that's due in May in the amount of $250,000. Again, it's a 50-50 match, but the 250 match from the county is already available in the current budget, so I'm not asking for additional dollars. I'm simply asking for the approval to submit that application, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Rush.
So I would make the motion that we receive the information tonight and that we allow staff to seek the grant funding in the amount of $250,000 in Part of and require an accounting match. Anything else you need?
No, sir, that's all I need from you.
Thank you.
Go back one, go back one slide.
So instead of, I guess, instead of getting your approval, Commissioner Rushing, he's exactly right, I need your approval to accept, adopt?
We need the board to adopt the Jesse Helms Park Master Plan as the master plan for that park.
Motion to approve the Jesse Helms Park Master Plan and receive Union County Board of Commissioners' approval for the Part of Grant Funding of $250,000.
Can we have a motion, any discussion? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Go back to the, go back to the slide. It's, we're older people, it's good to have it in front of us.
Which one would you like to see, Mr. Chairman?
Well, now he's going, I'm assuming, to make a motion on the lower one. I thought you wanted us to vote separately. Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Been a long day. Okay.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, the Piedmont Innovation Park Update, Assistant Manager Nolan.
The last you heard from us on the Piedmont Innovation Park was October of last year, and at that time, we had talked about the planned pump station and some of the issues and challenges with that pump station, and at the time, we were asking for direction to move forward with the City of Monroe because they had gravity sewer that was in the area. So this is to follow up on that previous meeting to kind of give you an idea of the status. There are two options that the engineers have come up with. One would provide sewer to the entire park. You can see on the slide, it would start at Rocky River. It's a 15-inch gravity line. It would go behind the bus garage. It would follow the stream, cross Price Shortcut, up into Gold Mine, and it would dead-end at Gold Mine. That would allow you to serve this piece of property up here, this property, and the entirety of the main parcel. There would be a bore under Price Shortcut and Rocky River. It would serve the entirety of the project. Total project cost is estimated to be 3.675 million right now, and there's an issue with that, which I'll get into in a second. This is a detailed breakdown of the estimate we have right now. You can see the total construction price down here with professional service being about 385,000. We have done quite a bit of design already, so that 385 is not total design cost, but that is what's left to get it to 100% complete. The second option, this would take a 15-inch sewer from Rocky River behind the bus garage to Price Shortcut. It would not go to Price Shortcut. You could serve some of this parcel with it, but you would not be able to serve anything north of Gold Mine. There would be a bore under Rocky River, but you would not do the one under Price-Shortcut. The total project cost is 2.561 million.
Patrick, let me ask you about that one. Does that one keep the sewer, is it still connect to City of Monroe, too?
Yes, sir. Yeah, they both follow the same alignment on the main piece of property. The difference is this one just doesn't go across Price-Shortcut to pick up those other two parcels. Same detailed breakdown, total construction 2.56 with the engineering to get us to 100% of 301,000. The concern is, we only have 2.55 million left in the bond that was put out for sewer construction on this property. What we would like to do is go forward with design of the entire property, because we know at some point we will have to provide sewer to that entire property. In the meantime, we can try to identify additional sources of funding to complete the project in its entirety, because it does make sense if we can build it all at once. We have had high-level conversations with the City of Monroe to see if they would be interested in partnering with trying to extend it, because it does benefit. Remember, one of the provisions is that we will annex this property into the City of Monroe. So from here, the goal would be to develop bid documents, and the section to the west of Price-Shortcut would be a bid alternate at this point. So if construction markets settle down a little bit, we get good bid prices, we'd be prepared to bid both projects out. We're looking at about six months to get it to 100% design with a 12- to 16-month construction time, so late 2023, early 2024 would be anticipated completion of the sewer line, which is when we could start accepting flow from any interested developments. The cost associated with the infrastructure would hopefully be recouped by selling the property to companies looking to locate in Union County, so you spend it upfront, hopefully you get it back, and then you can put it back into other economic development activities if that's what the board so chooses. So I've asked Chris Platae here tonight just to talk about market conditions, when we can start marketing the property, what he's seeing, what level of interest is out there in the community. So if you have any questions for me, I can answer them. If not, I'll turn it over to Chris.
I have one. How much conversation have you had with the City of Monroe about participating in the sewer line?
So we received these numbers about two weeks ago. I met with Brian Bjorn, Bjorn, about a week ago, and he was going to go back and talk to some of his folks to see what options they may have.
Okay. Commissioner Rush.
Will this, will this capacity be in Monroe's existing capacity, or would this be in Union County's?
It would be in Monroe's capacity.
Because we're annexing it?
Yes. It would be, it would end up being Monroe's line.
So this would not eat into our 600,000 available?
It would not.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so many of you have heard, we're under unprecedented demand for Union County for economic growth, throughout North Carolina's incredible success and companies coming to this state and to our county. We should be, at the end of the year, a record year for us. Because of that, most of the properties are gone, and so they're either under option or being acquired, and so it is imperative that we get new properties underway. Also, because of the demand throughout the country for construction, those timelines have pushed out. So companies looking at the timeline that we're seeing here puts us where we can start to market this site, because it is understandable that it'll be 12 to 18 months just to get building materials delivered and, you know, building up and running in a probably about 24-month period. So we're looking at the right timeline. We have been just starting to push it out, and we've got two interested parties just initially out on it. If you look at the initial, the core of the property, so basically from the bus garage over to Price-Shortcut, that's the part that we're pushing right now, because we know that either one or two will have sewer capability with that. So we're, you know, activity is still incredibly high, and so we need this property online, and so it, and we do have some good prospects that could potentially take the land.
Patrick, if you would, would you get me the numbers between what we want for the whole project and what we have in budget so that we can start communicating with the leaders of Monroe?
You're talking about the difference between what the total construction of Option 1 would be and what we have in current available funds?
Right, right. So that we'll know what we're asking for, and we'll try to, we've got the best relationship with Monroe we've ever had, so let's see how good it is.
Yeah, I'll get you the exact number, but it's roughly 1.1 million. That's the difference.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we move on to the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice report called Clayton Warner. Anybody ever told you you looked like Ben Affleck or something?
Never. I've never heard that before in my life.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Manager Watson and Commissioners, tonight you'll receive information on the Union County Community Development Block Grant Program, Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. What you have in your agenda packet is a copy of the draft report and the appendix, and you should have received this evening a copy of this presentation. If you recall, back in January, I gave you a brief preview of what this analysis entails. what this analysis entails as part of an overarching presentation on the county's CDBG program, and that we would be coming back to you for the adoption of the report, which details the results of this analysis, as well as recommendations for making improvements to the CDBG program. Before we start, I want to recognize our partner on this project, Central Illinois Regional Council, who staffed and most of the lead work in coordinating all the moving parts to get us to this draft report, and you'll hear from them about those different pieces of the study later in the presentation. I want to start off by running through the different sections of the presentation. I will provide you with an overview of fair housing and why we did this study. Then I'll turn it over to Central Illinois staff to talk about the different components of the study, including public participation and input, preliminary findings from the study, and the identified impediments to fair housing in Union County. Then I'll wrap up the presentation with a recommendation specific to the CDBG program and talk about some next steps. Of course, if you have any questions, please, please stop and ask. So let's start off with an overview of what is fair housing. Union County receives funds from the Unit, United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, through the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG. And as a participant of this program, we are required to complete the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, to ensure that HUD funded programs are being administered in a manner that furthers fair housing for federally protected classes. So what does it mean to further fair housing for these federally protected classes? Well, this is defined in the Fair Housing Act, known as Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. It guarantees protection from discrimination when renting or buying a home, getting a mortgage, seeking housing assistance, or engaging in other housing-related activities. And it prohibits discrimination in any real estate transaction based on those federally protected classes. As the executive agency in charge of administering this act, HUD must administer their programs and activities relating to housing and urban development in a manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing. And that means taking meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities, free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protected characteristics. This is, this just gives you some context of some other fair housing laws. We have, the Federal Fair Housing Act is the core of those fair housing laws. The State Fair Housing Act is similar, about 90, 90% of it is very similar to that Federal Fair Housing Act. And there are also local fair housing ordinances that are substantially equivalent, which basically means they're just like it. And we also have some other laws, just to give you some context of what is included in this. One of the things I want to mention is that because we do receive these, receive funds from HUD to administer these programs, we must also affirmatively further fair housing. So I'm going to introduce Christina Dennis at this time with Central Illinois. She's going to talk about some of these elements of the study, and then I'll, I'll come back and talk to you about some of the recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board, and Clayton, or Ben. And thanks for including me tonight as part of the Fair Housing Choice Report that you're listening to. Tonight, as Clayton indicated, I'll be speaking to public participation input and some of the preliminary findings that we found to date on the project. So first, we utilized a multi-prong approach to engage public in this process. It was a combination of in-person and virtual and online, as well as hybrid interactions for the public engagement, and included community open house engagement events at the Vaccine Clinic, the Farmer's Market, and we also had training that was online with Legal Aid of North Carolina. We held a stakeholder focus group on October 28th. We did a community survey that was open from July through January of 2022. We received 875 respondents in English, 20 in Spanish, and 52 from Union County staff through an internal survey, and four from housing providers. A fair housing citizen advice, excuse me, advisory committee was formed, and three of those four meetings have occurred, with the next one happening on April 27, 2022. This includes a list of the stakeholders that were included in the process and outreach to, to participate in surveys, focus groups, and other activities. It includes the participants that participated in the existing 2017 Analysis of Impediments and those that we added as a result of this Analysis of Impediments update. As I said, we had a focus group. It was virtual. It was on October 28th, and these are the participants that were part of that focus group, and we had a conversation about the previous impediments and the current conditions in the county leading to the updated study. The fair housing advisory committee members are presented here. They include members from local governments of Fairview, Wingate, Mineral Springs, Stallings, Monroe, Indian Trail, Wesley Chapel, Waxall, and Weddington were invited. I'll take you through some of the preliminary findings. So a lot of the census data was delayed during this time to do this update, so we gathered the best data that we could that was available. And based on that, we've seen a population increase of 18% in Union County. We've also seen household income increased by 20%. Rent rates have increased by 18%, and home values have increased by 22%. And we've seen a decrease in the use of public transit over the last decade. So this is what we gathered from the census. The document is very extensive and includes a lot of data, but this is just a summary this evening. The survey, it ran from July 2021 through January 22. As I indicated, 90% of, or excuse me, 96% of the residents were from Union County. What was interesting was 57% of the residents that responded indicated that a person with a disability resides in their household, and that is a difficulty for them or of a concern. Mostly homeowners participated. 34% of them indicated that they could not locate affordable housing, and 74% indicated they were not aware of fair housing laws. The impediments to the fair housing in 2017 focused on mobility, education, access, and maintaining or preservation of affordable housing units that don't have problems, those that are in good condition, up to code, and have accessibility for those that have disability or elderly. Those impediments we looked at and examined as we moved forward. For the 2022 plan, this is the proposed impediments that we see right now: formalized structure for enforcement of affordable housing opportunities, support for additional education and outreach, increasing the supply of affordable housing, and preserving the existing housing stock that's affordable, and understanding more about public transportation options for those who are low, moderate income and have special needs. They rose to the top in our conversations throughout this process. I'll turn it over to Clayton now. Thanks for your time.
So as I said earlier in the presentation, not only are we required to complete this analysis and the report and identify barriers to fair housing, we are required to take meaningful steps to overcome these barriers. And since 2012, which was the first time we did the analysis impediments, we've made some general progress, particularly, particularly related to public infrastructure and sidewalk improvements, and that's related to that mobility and access. But we've made little progress as it relates to other impediments related to fair housing, particularly education and access, and preservation of housing for low and moderate income households. So these recommendations are specific to addressing those impediments that we haven't made much progress on. So if, if you remember, that over a third of our survey respondents could not find affordable housing in the county, and almost 75% hadn't seen or heard anything related to fair housing. And so the creation of a countywide fair housing advisory council would be made up of diverse community representatives and subject matter experts on local and fair affordable housing issues. And this council would help address these issues by taking the research from this report, expanding on it, and making recommendations, and providing guidance to the board about feasible options for establishing a more formalized structure for fair housing awareness and enforcement, and meeting the needs of low and moderate income households looking for new affordable housing. You also remember back to those preliminary findings, the majority of our respondents are homeowners, and almost a third have septic tanks. So to help with the preservation of existing housing stock for low to moderate income households, we're recommending establishing a critical home repair program, starting with a countywide septic tank repair program. And we would be working in partnership with Environmental Health to design this program and implement it. It would be funded exclusively with CDBG funds for income-eligible households. And finally, we would recommend to add CDBG staff for project, program management activities related to this program. So that would mean intake, case management, and procurement activities, as well as helping to staff the fair housing advisory council. And again, the additional staff would be funded exclusively with CDBG funds. We would come back to you. So these are recommendations in concept, and we would come back to you in the near future to flesh these recommendations out fully. For example, presenting a structure for that council, the policies and procedures that would go in place for the septic tank repair program, and the most cost-effective option for adding additional staff to the program. But we want your input on this, so we are presenting this as information tonight, and I'll talk a little bit about next steps in a minute, but your input and feedback welcome, particularly about the structure of that advisory council. So what are some next steps? As you can see, we've kind of checked the box on all of these things. The project began in July, and Christina talked about several of the things that went into the study to get us to this point of the draft report. We're currently in the 30-day public comment period, and we're at our meeting tonight presenting information to you. We conducted a public hearing earlier on this report. We'll go to the final advisory committee meeting in, in the next couple weeks, and once we, that comment period closes, we'll incorporate those public comments to develop the final draft, including your comments, if you have any, or, or input that you have. And we'll come back at the next regular meeting to approve the report. The final report is due to HUD, May 13th. So we do, so with that, well, let me first thank Christina Dennis, also Suzie Kadar and Kate Fersinger. These are the staff from Central Illinois that helped do all of the, the work related to coordinating this effort. But if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Commissioner Rushing.
I'm a little, I'm a little confused again with the county's role, because like on my road out in the county, we have mobile homes, we have stick-built homes, we have a variety of homes, variety of neighbors from all different backgrounds. We're providing transportation services now. What is it that we can do as a county that, I mean, for example, let's say that we went in on the outside of a municipality in a donut hole, and we approved low-income housing, and we approved sewer water for that. I think we're going to get a lot of pushback, especially from our, we have 14 municipalities. So just how much control do we have over this within the county? Again, with most of the county having places that have a diverse array. And then the septic tank, just like your income-based septic tank help, what, if they're rentals, then is the income based on the renter or on the landlord? And if the landlord has a lot of income, how would he, how would he apply for septic tank repair?
So, so let me, this would be specifically, and we haven't worked out the details. I'll answer the septic tank question first. We haven't worked out all the details related to this, the policies and procedures, but more than likely, these are going to be owner-occupied homes that we're going to propose as eligible for this program, and it would be based on their, their income. As it relates to your other question about low-income housing, you know, that's why we're presenting or proposing the, the creation of the fair housing advisory council, because we're not experts in this. We want to gather subject matter experts, diverse community representatives, to bring back some more specific and solid recommendations to you about what is actually feasible in this county and what would work. And, and as I said, they would take the research from this report, and there's a lot of research in there about what other communities are doing. And so we would ask them to expand on that and come back to you to make some, some feasible recommendations.
Is there a designation, because right now, every time you see a house being built, you see a sold sign in the yard. Is there a designation that we can give that is only a certain income that can buy those houses or rent those homes, or?
It, it's based on, if you recall from the last presentation, I talked about those, the median income, 80% of median income and below, and certain levels that they would have to meet for that income. If we were to do something like the septic tank repair program, too, or any type of housing, we would also probably put a lien on that home for a certain number of years. It could be a forgivable, forgivable grant, or it could be a loan. We haven't worked out those details yet, but that's probably what we'd do to incentivize them staying in.
One place I've always seen that really impressed me is Kitty Hawk. At Kitty Hawk, because the, the properties are so expensive there, being beach properties, they went into a partnership with the school system, the county commissioners, and even one of the credit agencies. And what they did is they built apartments for teachers, and those teachers can rent those apartments, and their money goes right back to the credit agency, so they take it over. So it's a good partnership that maybe we should be looking at with this county of how they did it, and if we can do it, especially to help teachers and, and people just getting started out.
Yeah, and that's, that would be a great input for when we put together this council and give them some direction about what they need to consider. So we would definitely share that information with them.
Commissioner Rushing, I, when I first talked to Clayton about this, I shared your confusion. First, let me say, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is not something we went looking for. This is something that HUD told us we had to do.
Yes.
To be part of equal opportunity county. So I think when he gets some more information for us, we could possibly schedule a workshop or two-on-ones, but I still don't fully understand. I think I understand Bitcoins is good as I do this, and I don't know anything about Bitcoin. But it's something we have to do, and I saw a due date on your presentation.
Right. And, and the report includes, does include recommendations. Again, you're, you're adopting the, the report. What HUD is going to want to see is that you're making progress. Now, we've been doing this for 10 years now. Have they come and said, you're not making enough progress? No. But we, this is sort of the natural evolution of the CDBG program that we started and became an entitlement community in, in 2016, is, is they want to see us tackling some of these issues as it relates to those impediments, and those specifically would be the affordable housing and preservation of existing low and moderate income households. But yes, it is a requirement of.
Clayton, is there another county that's ahead of us on this that we could possibly go see and see what they're doing to help us get our mind wrapped around what we're being asked to do?
We want to find a county, then, that would be similar to what we look, what the look and feel of our county would like.
But I mean, further down the road, where they're making it happen.
Yeah, I mean, we can bring you back some of that information as well. In the report, there are some examples in there of what some other counties and municipalities are doing across the country as it relates to some of this. So you can look at that report, too, and it'll be in there.
I think we're all spatial learners. We need to see it.
Sure.
Okay.
I can get you that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right. Now we move on to ARPA funding recommendations, and I'll call on Deputy Manager Lancaster.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before I should get started, the county manager answered a question for me today that I had at the last meeting about this matter. He answered that there were no contracts between the consultant and the companies that own property on that road. So with that said, I'll make the motion that we approve the ARPA funding recommendations as presented by staff at the April 11, 2022 meeting.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
I'd be curious to know, Mr. Chairman. I'd be curious to know if Commissioner Rushing feels like there's no longer any kind of concern or cloud of suspicion that's over staff, over any citizens, members that may be running for reelection, or from our consultant that's worked with us on this particular item.
Yes, and I'll be glad to let the manager share with you what he shared with me today.
I'd like to hear from you, though. Is there no longer?
The answer, the question was answered today for him. It was answered finally today.
All right. So can you say that there is no longer? Because, let's face it, there are folks whose reputation has been called into question, has been injured. So are you prepared to say, in a public meeting, which I think is important, that there's no longer a cloud of suspicion over staff, over the consulting company that has worked for us on this matter, or folks that are running for reelection in this cycle?
Mr. Chairman, did you tell me today that you finally learned that there was no connection? And when did you learn that? And when did you learn that?
Mr. Rushing, in our conversation today, we spoke about Brown and Caldwell as our consultant. We had done due diligence relative to the questions that had been asked, contacted Brown and Caldwell specifically regarding whether or not they had contracted, done any contract work with McGee, the company in question, or had McGee contracted with them for any work. And based on their review, Brown and Caldwell's review of their records, they have not contracted with McGee, nor has McGee contracted with them for any work. Now, I don't know what other companies may be up and down these roads, so that I did not look at that, didn't ask any of those questions. I simply answered the question regarding Brown and Caldwell and McGee. Now, to Commissioner Williams' point, I have conducting management interviews with staff, and that is not complete.
I will be voting against this motion, because when an accusation is made like that, and the fact that, as you said, if something comes up in the future, this money could be called back, clawed back by the federal government, and then we would be forced to have to pay it. And the fact that we already have in place $5 million a year short line extension and $5 million a year transmission in the budget with Public Works, which will be $10 million a year, and we will accomplish $30 million in three years, which is basically the same timeframe that we're looking at on this ARPA money. So I'll be voting against the motion. Any other discussion?
Commissioner Rushen did ask me a question about timeline. If you'll bear with me just a second, let me look that up. One second, and I'll find that document here. That would have been. That appears to be Tuesday, April the 12th, when Brown and Caldwell was able to provide that information, that they have no records of their company ever having been a client of Brown and Caldwell, meaning they have no records of McGee Brothers ever being a client of Brown and Caldwell. And I received that information on Tuesday, the 12th.
So the day, the day after we had our meeting, you received that. When did you inform me?
Today.
Okay.
But I haven't informed any of the other board.
So I feel confident in this vote that I will not be called into question, nor any other commissioner up here will be called into question on this vote with that information, that Brown and Caldwell has no contracts with that organization. And if the money is deemed to go forward, I don't want to be seen as a stumbling block, nor did I last week. I asked for this information that was given within, within a 24-hour period. I asked it the week before. So if I would have had it by the time we had our meeting last week, I would have voted yes. And, and tonight I'll be voting yes, and I've made the motion.
Well, one other comment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
At the last meeting, this board voted to have the ARPA recommendations come back to us. I'd like to see that proceed before it's circumvented. I mean, we asked for the, the presentation, and I think Ms. Michelle can, can provide us some information, give us some insight.
But I will add to that, that you also said it was political payback. And from my standpoint, I cannot vote for that project, because that was your accusation. It was political payback for people raising money for me and candidate meals.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, please. Eight years ago, in July, I stood in Mr. McGee's kitchen and spoke to he and his wife about the water at their home. At that time, they showed me how they had to drink out of a Crystal Springs water jug, and I expressed to them that I understood, and I would do everything in my power to get water to as many people in this county as I could. And I meant that. But if this organization that we're relying on had any contracts with them, I was going to have trouble voting for that. The question was answered. It should have been answered privately, but some on this board saw, need to make a show of it. And it was an email to the county manager. It could have been answered within 24 hours, as it was, was answered within 24 hours. So, Mr. Hales, I brought the information that you were looking for about my conflicts. And I'm just saying that this was presented to us last week. It is my understanding from Michelle today that staff is trying to recommend this money go somewhere else other than water, and that is not my intention. And if that was the intention of the presentation last week, without answering my question before the meeting, I think that's, I think that that's unnecessary, and I think that that's unfair to the citizens with the water situation. So again, I, I made the motion that if you want to take water away from people, you're not going to do it and blame me for it.
Well, the problem is, you made an accusation it was political payback.
I answered, I told the county manager that if these four projects out of six had an issue, then I needed to know about it. I wanted to know about it, and I wanted to ask the question. And he's asked the question, and the question's been answered by the engineering firm. It's been answered. And if it would have been answered in an email, we would have never had to talk about it last week.
But we did.
But we did. That wasn't my choice.
It was your choice to accuse me of political payback.
It's not just you. I accepted money that July of 2014. I accepted money and told the man in his kitchen that I would do everything I could to get water to him and every other person in Union County. So again, there, there's no reason to take money from people for water lines in this county when the question's been answered. No. They do not have contracts with one another. They haven't had contracts with one another, and that's the case. That's the answer to the question that I asked. And if you feel comfortable taking the money away from them, it's going to be your choice, not my choice.
Well, the problem is, you cast a cloud, and then you refuse to accept responsibility for casting a cloud. I look at this like.
I just made the motion. I just made the motion. So you don't have any excuse not to vote on it if I made the motion. So I'm taking the cloud away. I'm taking the cloud away. The cloud was not put out there by me. The cloud was put out there in the public by you.
You need to take ownership of the cloud.
I just did, and I made the motion to approve the projects.
Well, this is like the great leader Solomon in the Bible. When both women claimed the baby was theirs, King Solomon said, tear it in half and give half of it to each one.
Well, that's what you're about to do with this fund. You're going to tear them in half and give them for projects that don't include water. Now, we voted as a board for water, and this is not going to water. You're going to present something tonight that is not water. You're going to take it from water, and you're going to put it somewhere else. People can't drink broadband. They cannot do it. People have begged you for water in this county. We've made a commitment to people for water in this county, and because you gave something that looked like it was something that we all needed to look at more, and the question could have been answered within 24 hours, instead, it's taken a week. It's taken a week and a half almost for me to get this answer. That's a simple answer.
Well, what I'm going to say to that is, you have got to learn that your comments, both from this dice and on Facebook, they have consequences.
Mr. Chairman.
Words have consequences.
Mr. Chairman, you've got to learn that I have.
Let's vote. We have a motion. All in favor of Commissioner Rushen's motion of spending 32.5 million on water, raise your hand. All opposed?
I'm going to vote aye, only because Commissioner Rushing has withdrawn his objection. I am still, well, we're, I'm voting, I'm voting aye on the motion.
Okay. All opposed? Three, it fails.
Can we hear Ms. Lancaster's?
Yes. All right, Commissioner, I mean Deputy Manager Lancaster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm going to go briefly over some information that you've seen previously, but this is really for you and the public to remind everyone of the ARPA allocation that we are being provided by the federal government, $46.5 million, with the objectives that you have seen before regarding COVID response efforts, replacing lost public sector revenue, supporting economic stabilization, and focusing on issues that address public health in our community. Again, this is the one bullet that I've repeated several times, and I will repeat it again tonight. We have to have these dollars allocated by the end of December 2024 and spent by the end of December 2026. And then in the chart here, you see the allocations that the board had previously adopted. At the April 11th meeting last week, there were two board actions. One was to table the action on the Union County water Brown and Caldwell project recommendations, and the second was a request to ask staff to come back to this meeting with recommendations for other projects that the $32.5 million could be used for. And so this is the list that staff has worked on, the management team has worked last week to identify projects that we felt were viable, that could be used if the board chose to take a different action on project allocation. So I'm going to go through these individually. There are some community partners here that are associated with, with each of these projects if there are questions that I'm unable to answer. And after I go through each bullet, we, we can pause and take questions on those instead of waiting until the end. So the first group is around public safety projects and allocations. So we are recommending a, a potential allocation of $7 million. The first is for the crime lab that the sheriff had in his long-range plans for his new facility, a million dollars to go ahead and get that upfitted and running in order for him to, to have the, this work done locally and to see a potential revenue source for the sheriff's operation here. The second item is short-term fire training needs, $1.5 million. And this is an area where our fire partners, as well as our fire marshal's office, are looking for some opportunity to invest in some apparatus and supply that can be used around the county for short-term fire training needs. The third bullet here is public safety training center, $4.5 million. This would be for engineering design and site selection for a Union County public safety training center. I think you're all aware of the request that SPCC has in their initial capital plan. There's been further conversations between community partners, staff, and SPCC, and this would potentially further that project as a county-led project to, to do the engineering design and site selection for a potential public safety training center. I'm happy to answer questions. There are others in the room who could answer questions about this specifically, if you have any.
Commissioner Hales.
Yeah. I thank you for your time, and I, I agree. I've had the privilege of seeing the crime lab as, as it is developing right now. This equipment would allow us to process evidence in a matter of weeks, as opposed to 18 to 24 months that it's taken now. So, and, and the fire training needs, we had an opportunity where we went to Buncombe County and saw the effectiveness of having fire training. And right now, we are short on some facilities to train our volunteer fire departments. And the Buncombe facility that we saw was very impressive. And, you know, we, we say that public safety is our, our number-one goal. We also got to make sure that we can train our people to the point that they can do their job safely and help one another. So therefore, I'd like to make a motion, we reallocate $7 million to the recommended public safety projects. That includes $1 million for the sheriff's office crime lab, $1,500,000 for the short-term fire training needs, and $4,500,000 for engineering design and site selection for a Union County public safety training center.
Any discussion? Commissioner Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. An unfortunate position that I find myself in and that we find ourselves in. I certainly am not here to question Commissioner Rushing's motives as to why he brought up that issue. But I would say that we have this money. We've had it laid in our laps, and an opportunity to do good for the citizens of Union County with it. There's been, there's, there's been no doubt, I hope, by anyone that I, I pushed forward the Yadkin project, I pushed forward every water project, the, I believe, the 742 line, the eastern line that we're, that we voted on last time, to move clean, quality water to our citizens in the Yadkin Basin and throughout Union County. So, so I find myself, I voted for that, for us to, to provide the majority of that money for that purpose. I also find myself here, public safety is, of our five priorities, public safety is number one. And I certainly know the impact that that crime lab can have on, on this county, along with those training needs, and particularly that public safety training center, and how it works within our community college system, our education, of our law enforcement, safety officers, all of that. So, a difficult decision for me. I want to do it, I want to do them both. I want to do it all. And I hate that I could not vote, along with you guys, to approve all that money for that, because Commissioner Hales was right. We asked staff to gather information. You know, so many times we make decisions up here, and we say, hey, staff, how about you do this? Do you know how many hours and time that it takes them to put that information together? And then we flippantly throw it over our shoulder for something that has nothing to do with the information. So I want to hear what you had to say, Michelle. So I'm going to vote in favor of the motion for that $7 million. Yes, it's taking water away, our money for water away, and I hate it. I'll be voting no on the rest. Thank you.
Commissioner Rushen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Michelle, it amazes me how all this was found and thought up and presented before I could be given the answer to my question, that took less than 24 hours to get the answer to from the consultant, Brown and Caldwell. So yes, we are taking $32 million that we, as a board, said would go to water projects. And because of a question that I had on, does this company have contracts with someone who had gotten a lot of majority of the projects? The question was answered. The question could have been answered within 24 hours, when it was asked the Friday or the Thursday before, in an email to the manager. Brown and Caldwell, do you have any conflicts of interest in this? Again, when I'm voting on road projects as a member of the RPO, I have to list where I own land, where my dad owns land, where my mom owns land, where my brother's on land, where my sister owns land, where my in-laws own land. I have to answer that in an ethics form. And there's nothing wrong with asking the manager a question and getting an answer to it before all this is come up with as a different plan. And last week, there was several minutes spent by staff not answering my question, which is a simple question, yes or no. And, you know, gentlemen, it's a mistake, and the people in this county who need water are gonna, they're not going to like this. You can do it if you want to, but you don't have to do it. You don't have to vote to do this. Don't punish me and punish people in this county because you're punishing me. That's silly. And that's the reason that Union County doesn't make sense, is because. And that's the reason that Union County doesn't make sense, is because you're punishing me instead of giving the water to the people. And a simple question was asked, and it could have been answered within twenty-four hours. It's almost like that thing last week was set up to fail. I hope that that's not the case.
Can I provide some additional information?
Well, you could have last week.
You asked me a question on Friday and sent me an email.
Right.
And then Monday, the board gave other direction. Staff contacted Brown &amp; Caldwell, who told them that it may take several days or weeks for them to go comb through their records. But they were able to do that, and they put the time, energy, and effort in to go through that and provide an answer. This was after Monday, by Tuesday, that they did not have any contracts with the McGee's or vice versa, either way. The second part of the complaint was against Union County Public Works. That has taken some time to go through and look at interviews, discussions that I've had with staff regarding these projects, how they've been developed, what the interests of employees may have been. They took these allegations serious. They're very upset. So, as doing due diligence and taking the time to do that and do it correctly is important. And we have, I've yet to finish one of the interviews. That person's on vacation. But when they come back, I will complete that work. At this...
Well, in the meantime, the money, we go.
And you'll have one person blame Commissioner Rushing, and that person stares at you in the mirror.
This, this is what I was asked for.
You threw this board and staff into chaos on a Friday before a weekend, and it wasn't merely a series of questions. It was very accusative in tone. All of us have read it, and it's not the first time, and sadly, I don't think it'll be the last time, that you throw the rest of the board and staff and citizens in chaos on an issue. And I'm sorely disappointed that you don't feel it in you to apologize to your peers, to staff, to Brown &amp; Caldwell, to citizens of this county whose reputations have been injured when you do this. And it's, I think back to July of last year, where you talked about thirty-five million dollars in money that was available sitting out there, you know, that the county could have used, you know, to meet its needs, but instead, you know, we would have, we were just determined to increase ad valorem rates by one point seven percent. Now, I voted with you on your motion tonight because you indicated that you had withdrawn your concern. But I just, I wish that you would admit when you're wrong, because all of us are wrong on occasion, and just apologize.
If it will get water, if it will get thirty-two million dollars of water, I'll apologize.
I'll go bigger than that, you know? We heard earlier this year, when Public Works made a presentation, that it would cost nearly a billion dollars to run water throughout the county. Do you remember that?
I do, and I remember being told three years ago it costs sixty-four, sixty-five million dollars.
Well, I remember, I don't remember that. I remember when, when, well, I remember in 2020, you telling me it would cost two hundred to three hundred million dollars.
To run water to every house in Union County, every road.
But, but I also remember you telling Public Works staff that you had more confidence in the information being presented to you today, this year, than you did in the past. Is that fair to say?
No, I felt like that six hundred percent increase in the cost was not correct.
Okay. Well, I remember, and perhaps I'll spend the time to go back and look at the meeting, but I definitely remember you having more confidence in staff today than staff back then. But in any event, if you're serious about running water throughout the county and not merely using it as a campaign issue, by the which, by, you know, which in a way you never, you never get solved, you know? If you're serious about solving that issue, perhaps we should entertain nearly a one-billion-dollar general obligation bond.
Would you like to make that motion?
I think as somebody who's been pounding the table for year after year after year and has never been able to deliver on this, or to my mind, any issue, you know, I think you should entertain that motion, and I will give serious consideration to supporting it.
Jerry, how long did it take you to get the 4H arena built?
Since 2006.
Takes a long time sometimes.
Sometimes it, sometimes it takes less than a year.
How many millions of dollars do we have to, over, how much are we predicting that we have over this year? Nine million? Let's put that nine million to the water.
As a, as a miniscule, as a pittance to a one-billion-dollar price tag?
Well, just keep doing it.
Put your money where your mouth is.
Keep doing it.
Go ahead and push for a bond or...
Mr. Williams, Commissioner Williams, we have an election coming up.
Yep.
And if the right people are elected, movement can be made toward getting water to people in the county that ask for it. The lady who asked for it tonight, if you want me to kiss your rear, I'll come over and do it, if it means getting thirty-two million dollars worth of water to people that need it in this county. I just want to make sure that I'm not going to be called into question, that nobody on here is going to be called into question about this at a later date and the money taken back, because people have waited too long. And the answer was given finally today. Finally today, I got the answers I was asking for, and here it is. This was come up with to take that money away, not to, not to, but any other reason to punish people for me asking a simple question. Is there a conflict?
Mr. Chairman, can we call the question, please? We've got a motion on the board.
All right, motion to call a question. All in favor?
No, 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 no.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to move seven million dollars to a crime lab, short-term training, crime lab for one million, short-term fire training needs, one point five million, public safety training center, four and a half million. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is five million dollars for broadband. This item is a little more detailed and complex, given the changing environment regarding broadband funding in the state of North Carolina. I'm actually, this, you'll see, I have an action slide after this that asks for some additional action around broadband, specifically to free up the two point three million that was previously requested and the board agreed to as a holdback amount before the rules were finalized. You all remember that it took quite a while for us to get the final rules. So we would like to have that money released for broadband, and then this would be an additional five million dollars for broadband projects. Currently, there are three grant programs that the state of North Carolina is working toward. One is open currently called the Great Grant Program. There are three hundred and fifty, there is three hundred and fifty million dollars available from the state for providers to make requests to provide broadband in communities across North Carolina. Those applications are due on May the fourth to the state. Currently, we have had five internet service providers who have expressed interest in applying for those dollars. The way that the county plays into this particular grant program is if the provider can show a partnership with the county and also show that the county is willing to put some dollars towards their application, they will receive from the state additional points when those applications are evaluated. So currently, we have about three percent or twenty-eight hundred homes and businesses that are defined by the state as not being served or underserved through, with internet. So those would be areas that are, they're geographically dispersed across the county, and our IT director has been working really closely with the state and with the providers to really nail down where we can get these problems solved and these gaps addressed. The next grant program that has not been completely authored by the state, but we have some information on that program, is going to be the CAB program. It's the Completing Accessibility to Broadband Program, and there's four hundred million dollars available from the state for that program. And then there is ninety million that will be the last grant program that they open, which is called Stopgap, which is where they hope to bridge any gaps that they see. Happy to answer any questions here, or John Emilio is here to answer questions also.
Any questions? Well, before I make a motion, I'm going to make one discussion item. We have the framework to spend thirty-two and a half million dollars from Brown &amp; Caldwell, or thirty-five million.
Correct.
Over the next three years, FY '23, FY '24, and FY '25, am I correct to say we've got five million short line, five million transmission line each year? Mr. Manager, or Brian?
Chairman, yes, sir, that is correct.
All right. With that being said, I want to make a motion to move, to reallocate two point three five million from the holdback category to broadband projects, and an additional five million from the thirty-two point five million for broadband projects for a total of seven point three five million, and authorize the county manager to enter into appropriate agreements with service providers for state funding grant opportunities, and also to reallocate two million dollars from the thirty-two and a half million for the southwestern regional library that is grossly underfunded so that we can try to get what we started out in '16 built somewhat close to what we promised the people. And Michelle, when you talked about the CAB program?
Yes.
When they come out with the details on that, it's going to be, they're going to match our dollars, right?
So our understanding, again, that program has not been completely authored, but at least what we are hearing from Representative ARP's office and from the Department of IT at the state level, is that that program will allow the county to really drive the broadband program, issue RFPs, and then leverage our any dollars that we have to gain the dollars that the state is willing to provide at a greater level than the provider-led program, which is Great Grant.
So that's seven point three five, once that CAB program is approved. And if we are successful in getting a grant, they'll match our seven point three five.
In some form, yes. What the flexibility we're asking for is, as John works with providers through all of these grant opportunities, that we know kind of the bucket of dollars we have so that we can contribute those in places that we think make sense to leverage those state dollars differently. Again, this has been a topic that has been talked about since the beginning of the pandemic. These are continuing to be fleshed out, and so we're learning literally more and more every day about how this works, but that will, we are, feel really certain it'll give us a stronger chance of getting those projects in this community.
And with that being said, and keeping in mind, if we have another pandemic come in and children are sent home with their laptops, we will be in a better position to educate our children. So with that, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I support this motion. We all know that there's a broadband divide, a technology divide, and nowhere is that more evident in the central and eastern and southern parts of this county. And I think that this kind of commitment to high-speed broadband, high-speed internet will go a long way towards narrowing that divide and making educational opportunities more available, remote work opportunities more available, and I think that's a very good thing for Union County.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome. The last two projects that, there are actually three, but the last two that are listed are bundled, so I'll cover those now. The Wingate Economic Development and Aditorium Project, we are recommending a potential use of five million dollars. Rhett Brown and James Bullock are here from Wingate. If there are any specific questions that you have, this is a capital investment project that Wingate University, along with the town of Wingate, are looking at for an initial investment of thirty million dollars for a national-level indoor aquatic facility. This would expand aquatic opportunities for Wingate University and residents of Union County, and it is anticipated that it would have significant economic impact in the area around Wingate University. In the, in the details that have been provided to me, they anticipate that within the first few years of operation, this facility would host twelve to fifteen local meets, four to six regional meets, and one national-level event. And so this would essentially be a contribution toward that economic development and auditorium project for Wingate and Wingate University.
Okay, move on.
Okay. The last item, they're listed as two separate bullet points, but they are dependent upon one another. As you all know, we have been working on a space needs assessment, and so we admit that this is a little chicken, chicken before the egg, perhaps, but when asked to look at how we could spend these dollars, this is, these are two projects that we came up with. You should expect to hear in the next sixty to ninety days the full space needs analysis that looks at the government facilities, as well as the judicial complex. And specifically, we know that one of the things that we've learned is that the judicial operations has identified the need for four additional courtrooms and support space to meet their demand in backlog. Currently, we are setting up a temporary courtroom in the jury assembly room that can be operational in July because we are receiving an emergency judge from the administrative office of the courts to move along some backlog cases in district court specifically. The space needs assessment has identified over twenty-six thousand square feet and gross square feet in space needs for judicial operations over the next ten-year period, and we know that we cannot, we cannot expand the existing judicial center. There's not an adequate site footprint for that. So in looking at what is, what the potential opportunities are, one of the recommendations has been to look at moving some of the judicial operations into this building. That would require moving things out of this building because we're strapped for space as well. So sequencing of that would be to move the Union Water Operations out of this facility to a water ops center expansion. So they have money for that in their budget, but they need additional dollars, which is where the four million comes into play, to make that work in terms of cost escalation and the size and scope that they would need. What we would then do is move the DA's office to this facility to allow for some expansion space and the courthouse to give us some long-term flexibility in how we can operate in that facility. And so Trey Robinson's here, Judge Hux is on vacation or would be here, and she knows about this recommendation, and Chris Boyd is here as well, if there are any questions.
Any questions? We're not going to act on that tonight.
And that's perfectly fine. You've already taken the first action that I had here, and then we're open to any desired action that the board has on the additional recommendations or previous recommendations. We've essentially made about sixty-four million dollars in recommendations over the last two weeks.
Well, and as far as the desired action with Brown &amp; Caldwell, we, I would, we'll talk about this at the next meeting, but I think we've got the roadmap for the next three years on short line and transmission lines. Commissioner Rush...
Mr. Chairman, can, can, these are interesting projects that we need to understand further. If that's something you can bring back to us so we can have a better understanding?
Absolutely. We can, we can get you more information on those last few and can set up, you know, additional work session or whatever you'd like to do to gain that information.
Thank you.
We'll have the space needs study presentation to the board.
June, we think, is that what we're shooting for? First meeting of June.
Okay. We're moving on to appointments to Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. Consider the reappointment of Mike Como to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Mike Como's term on the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee has expired. The vacancy has been advertised in accordance with the board's rules of procedures. Mr. Como has applied for reappointment. No other applications received. I appreciate Mr. Como's willingness to help, and so I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Como to Parks and Recreation. Any questions? None being, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, county manager comments?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, please be reminded that our next time we'll get together is April the 25th for a budget workshop beginning at one o'clock. Scheduled go from one to five, in which you will receive a update on the... Scheduled go from 1:00 to 5:00, in which you will receive an update on the water sewer master plan. You will be given information in, on the water basin, excuse me, on the sewer basin service area boundaries. There will be a review of CIP projects that have been completed within the last three years, that were started before, 36 months ago. Those projects that were started within the last three years and completed within the last three years, and those that were started within the last three years and are still in progress. In addition, we'll be doing a three-year look back on the public works budget and a three-year look forward on that budget. So, that is April the 25th, budget workshop, half-day from 1:00 to 5:00. Thank you.
Commissioner Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for just a couple of things. First, I want to apologize, as always, to my wife and family. That was, I was a little shell-shocked there, and I always forget to introduce them all. For those who know the backstory, one was the ones, one on my left, I think, was the ones whose head went through the sheet rock, the one on the right was the bull rider, and that was his lovely wife Paige, and Miles, and Greenlee, who are two of the 10. The second item is I wish to chastise, or I guess I'll leave that off and just say thank you to the Board of County Commissioners, my fellow members of the board for coming up with such a preposterous idea. And thirdly, to say, just to comment on sharing the vision, if you remember the history of that, and Commissioner Rushing asked me the question, we had a little bit of money left in 2006 when we finished the Ag Center, and that was always a part of the, of the campus, the potential for outdoor events and livestock activities and things like that was always a part of the original plan, but there wasn't enough money. So, we cut a lot of the money out of the budget in order to get the Ag Center built, but we never gave up, gave up on the idea. There was a lot of time spent with consultants and people spending money and time and discussion, and we came up with the idea of the, I believe it was like an $11 million facility that could handle high school graduations and those kind of things. And we put it out to the voters, and the voters said no, that they weren't interested in spending money for something like that. So, being the liaison to the Ag Advisory Board, I went to Manager Watson at the time, and I said, I just want to share this information with you. It's an idea that has been worked on for many years, but I'm through. I just want to share that with you and give you the leadership, and you can do with it as you please. And so, Manager Watson, no pun intended, took the bull by the horns. He went to Chris and his staff. He went to the Ag Advisory Board, Brad and his group over there, Andrew Balkum, Jim Chafin, everybody pitched in on that effort, and the special events center is a reality. So, it was a group effort, and you made a lot of kids and livestock people happy and appreciative of your interest in their desires and their livelihoods and the things they do. And if I happen to be a part of getting that done, I won't apologize. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Rushing?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Simpson, it was a well-deserved honor, and I was proud to be able to vote for that tonight, for you to have that honor.
Commissioner Haynes?
I just want to congratulate Jerry. It's a well-deserved and long-fought-for that came through for Union County and its agricultural and youth groups.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'd just like to echo my peers' comments. Congratulations, Commissioner Simpson. This is well-deserved, and I look forward to enjoying the event center for many, many years to come. The last thing I'd like to say is just, I know things can get contentious sometimes among us, but I'd like to give an attaboy to all five of us based on what happened this past Monday. I've been talking and posting on the transformational nature of what happened on Monday last week, and it's pretty significant, and I think it's something we can all be proud of. As a Board of County Commissioners, as a Board of Governors, as principals of the Water and Sewer District, I think we took charge of matters in a way that is commendable and that increases confidence going forward. We also rolled back a, we passed an ordinance regarding a clawback provision for unused sewer capacity from 11 years potentially to eight years, which I think was also a very good step. But again, I just want to commend each and every one of us, all of my peers here, for a job well-done on Monday. That was truly a transformational day, and it fills me with high confidence in the future. Thank you.
Okay. I have had the opportunity to serve as vice chair or chair for four years. And Stoney, the first year, I owe you a thank you. You supported Richard being chair, me being vice chair, and I learned a tremendous amount. The second year, Jerry, I learned a lot under him, mostly that the chair can say, "I've got this, and just let me drive the car." From Richard, I learned you don't park in the manager's spot. Last year, I started getting my wheels under me of how to accomplish things and build a team. And this year, when me and David were elected chair and vice chair, I told him, "We are going to accomplish so much this year. We're going to close gaps, make things happen." And I think we have, and I am very proud of that. And I want to say something to the employees of the organization, and I'm speaking for myself. I trust you. I believe in you. I know you're doing the best job you can, and it's a hard time and a hard job, but I believe in you. I believe in our sheriff. He's amazing to me. He can walk up to a podium and make a speech, and he's older than me, but it sounds like it was wrote by a presidential speechwriter. I appreciate the fire departments, our fire marshal. I just, I don't say this to get votes. I say this because I am proud to be a citizen of Union County for 68 and 1/2 years, one day less than Commissioner Simpson. All right. With no further ado, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye.